For the last time, where's Jacques?
Oh, there he is.
Okay. I had to get my last, I had to get the last one in. Last one in. Welcome, everyone, and we'll call to order the Capitola City Council meeting for Thursday, December 13th. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Botor.
Here.
And Mayor Termine.
Here. Would you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Staff, are there any additional materials?
None.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes.
Excellent.
One announcement? The announcement? Ron's announcement?
We'll move on to announcements.
Yes.
We'll pick it up. This is the time for public comments. Anyone who has a comment on an item that is not on this evening's agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move along. We have our treasurer. Any comments for the good of the order, Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you, Mayor Termine. There's actually two things. First, I'd like to address the $65,000 that you might have read in the Santa Cruz Sentinel the other day, yesterday, actually. And I actually had, I don't know where they got their numbers, but they're correct. So I had gone into Finance Director's office last week asking, "Who the heck is this Shoot M. Haley LLP and why are they charging us $65,000?" And he said, "Oh, that's Measure L, legal fees." And I recall when we talked about this in the city council back in September, October. I remember when we went ahead and talked about, yeah, going out and getting a legal opinion. I apologize, I didn't ask how much that was going to cost. I usually try to, when we ask for a special counsel or opinion from Public Works or whatever, I usually ask, "Well, let's, you know, how much is that going to put you back in schedule or cost?" But I had no idea that we were signing up for 65K. So I think there's a lesson here, maybe it's just for the future city council, that when we do ask for, you know, special counsel or send things back to committee or ask for another consultant to come weigh in on something, that we should always consider the impact on staff and time and money. So...
Mr. Treasurer, just to clarify, we didn't pay a consultant for that. We actually brought it to a judge. We did not prevail. We paid the other party's legal fees.
Okay, I, all right, fine.
Which doesn't resolve, you know, resolve us of any lack of attention and perhaps more attention should have been paid by the council on that. So it might have been avoided, but your point is well taken.
It's just something that I had, and maybe I'm improperly viewing things from this desk. It's this, sometimes we're kind of, it seems to me we're cavalier in sending things back to staff for more opinions, more detail, more, you know, and that all, whenever we do that, it's, it's an impact. Sometimes we should, maybe we should make decisions with less information. Anyway, that's Treasurer mouling off. Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's your job.
Not anymore. Because...
I think that's all we have time for, for your comments. We're going to move on to council.
Because as you well know, we passed Measure K, and as of the passage of that measure, we no longer require an elected treasurer. We instead are allowed to appoint a treasurer. And since I am an elected treasurer, I thought it would be an appropriate time to give you guys, the new city council, an opportunity to appoint a treasurer instead. And hopefully, that would be the Finance Director, but that's just my personal opinion. So I would like to announce that my intention to resign as the elected treasurer effective in the next couple of weeks, depending on when staff says it's most appropriate from an administrative standpoint, and give you the opportunity to appoint a treasurer. So thank you for allowing me to speak at these opportunities, and it's been a great pleasure to work with you guys, and I'll be seeing you around.
Thank you. Do we have to accept the resignation?
I believe you do.
Ah, okay. I thought I had you on a technicality, but thank you. You are, you're a terrific treasurer, and you have been for the last two years. Council comments?
None.
Nothing.
Nothing? Well, leave it up to me. I have the, we've been waiting for this. This is the second-place winner from the plein air event. It had to be sent back to the artist to be varnished because it is done in oils, I think. But this is second place. It will be hanging in council chambers to add to our collection of plein air winners. We had the Capitola Employees Holiday Party last night, and it is just great. We have such a cohesive group and a terrific bunch of staff and all the employees, all the departments. A good time was had by all. Staff, any comments?
None tonight.
None? We move on to the consent calendar. These are items taken as a single vote unless someone on the council or the audience would like to pull an item. I'll entertain a motion.
Move the consent calendar.
I asked the public if anyone would like to pull anything. Hearing, no one, I saw no movement out there.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Very good. We'll now go on to general government public hearings. The first item is, "Consider a resolution confirming and approving the canvass and returns and results of the general municipal election." Madam City Clerk?
Yes, as required by state law, the county registrar of voters, since we have a consolidated election, has 30 days to certify the election. She has done so and provided us with the official results. Those are in your packet. The election included three members of the city council for four-year terms, three city measures, and one public measure done by initiative. All four items passed. So in addition to accepting the returns for the incoming city council member, we are also accepting the will of the voters as required by law and enacting the four ordinances related to the items that were voted upon by measure.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Any comments from the public? Please step forward. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Tom Fredericks. I'm from Felton, and I'm here to urge council to consider the ramifications of entering the language of Measure L into ordinance. I got here by using our current regional transportation network, which is the 35 bus to the 66 bus to the 55 bus. Everything synced up beautifully tonight, so I'm here on time. But I'm here from the perspective of it being a regional transportation plan. And, you know, I really, I don't know if I'll live long enough, given my age of 71, but for me, it would, who used the bus system, the idea of a reliable other mode of transportation in the rail corridor would be a wonderful quality-of-life addition to my daily life. And this measure, through its misrepresentations, was allowed to pass at a very narrow margin and jeopardizes the regional transportation planning. So I wanted to offer that perspective tonight as you proceed with your discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Welcome.
Thank you, and congratulations to new council members. My name is Barry Scott. I live in Aptos, and I rise with the same concerns as the previous speaker. I'm a county resident, and I see the rail corridor as a county piece of infrastructure. And my concern is that if you adopt the results of the election while the Measure L is being investigated, that this may be a mistake. There's obviously problems with the transparency and the conduct of the Measure L campaign. If you adopt that measure and that language, you're changing the city charter and the health and safety ordinances, and I think that would be premature. I would ask that a motion be made to accept the results with the condition that the Measure L language is, has flaws and questions, and then table that part of it to a later date.
Thank you. And I will, would anyone else like to see this? I'll bring it back now. And city attorney, I think that we have no other option but to certify the election. Is that true?
The Elections Code says that once the election results have been certified, that you are under a mandate. So it's a ministerial act on the city council. You don't have any discretion with regard to enacting it into law as it was passed by the voters.
Thank you. Understood. Any comments by council? Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt staff recommendation and approve the election results by resolution.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries. Now on to the fun part. This is the time where we thank retiring council members, and I'm afraid Stephanie Harland could not be with us tonight, but hopefully she's watching, maybe online. And I will show you the lovely gifts, the lovely parting gifts we've gotten. This is from Frank Perry, and they are seed packets from the Brown Bulb and Seed Ranch, Capitola, California, 1918, from the Capitola Historic Museum. This is a gem. This is going to Stephanie, and I believe, is the museum putting these posters up for sale?
It will next year when it reopens.
There we go. Very nice, and I'll set this back here, and we'll get that to Stephanie. I get to open up Stephanie's lovely gift. This is grizz, like, this is early Christmas. This is great. Okay? It'll drop, huh? Very nice.
Oh, my.
Okay, this says, "Stephanie Harland, thank you for your dedicated service to Capitola" and this city seal, and it's a lovely piece of glassware. And we'll hold that over for Stephanie as well. And I will open up the floor. Anyone who wanted to, anyone from the public who wanted to say something about our council member Harland and her retiring out of council after many, many, many years of service? If not, I'll bring it up to here. What do you have to say about our friend Stephanie?
You know, it's, ever since I've been on the council, which has been six years, both Stephanie and Mike have been here with me for every meeting, and it's been a treat. I remember the first meeting I attended, we got our first packet for the meeting, and it was 800 pages, and I thought it was a joke. And unfortunately, what was on there was, we were trying to pass an ordinance to decide whether we charged 10 cents or 25 cents a bag to discourage people from, you know, to start encouraging the use of reusable bags. And I remember that that was a very highly contested item here in the council. It passed three to two, and it was myself, Dennis Norton, and Stephanie Harland that passed that measure. And I always give her credit because she was very adamant about how important this was. Stephanie was a big protector of, one of her big passions was the Monterey Bay Scenic Trail. She's been here for, I don't know the exact number, I'm going to say it's 32 years on the city council.
Give or take.
Many terms, okay? I heard that she was the first woman mayor in Capitola. It's a remarkable career. She always added something lively to the conversation, and it was, it's been a wonderful six years for me. I'm going to miss both of them, and at this time especially her, and I wish her the best in her retirement.
Words for Stephanie?
Yes. It was maybe 2014 or 2015 when Stephanie invited me to lunch and asked me if I had ever considered running for city council, and that was one of the first times that I actually considered doing it. And since that time, I was so very lucky to have Stephanie's guidance and mentorship and all of the many years of institutional knowledge that she had to just share with me, and I was very lucky in that regard. And she was always, well, always very willing to share that with myself and with anyone else. She has given so many years of service to our city, and it's just phenomenal to see someone that spends so many years of their life in service to others, and I'm so grateful to have had these two years with her on the council. And if she thinks that I'm not going to keep calling her for advice, then she's wrong. But, so if she's watching, I would just say, "Stephanie, thank you so very much. It was an honor to serve with you."
Jacques?
One thing I like about Stephanie, and I think a lot of people in this town have benefited from that, and that's her innate ability to know what's going on in the neighborhoods. She goes out and talks to people, knocks on doors. If there's an issue coming up, she'll find out what the neighbors feel about it. Let's say it's a city planning issue. She'll go around and talk to the neighbors and see how this particular plan of someone is going to affect them, and is this something reasonable, certainly within the zoning code. So I link up with her on that. I think any one of us, and I think we all agree, our job is to know how any particular issue that comes before us is going to affect the people in Capitola. And that's one thing. She taught me, and it's very important for her, and I think we're going to continue that tradition. Thank you. For me, the greatest lesson that Stephanie taught me, and I sat at her side up here for 14 years, and I remember one particular vote where three council members, because of the lineup, were voting first, and they all voted aye. Stephanie and I were really on the fence about this project, and I went along with what I knew was going to be a passed vote to try and get a unanimous decision. And she voted no. And I said, "Why'd you vote no?" She goes, "Well, you were against it too." I said, "Yeah, but we already had three votes." And she goes, "That doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if you had a lone vote. Always vote the way you feel about a project." And that was an eye-opener for me, being the kind of person who always wants everyone to come together. Standing apart is as important as coming together. So I appreciate Stephanie. Now, I think I have a lovely parting gift. Who is, who is the lucky devil who's going to give that to me?
Oh, that's me, but I'm going to bring you up here.
Oh, okay.
It's what you do to everybody else that you talk to.
That's, this is true.
You're going to hold the microphone. I've learned everything from...
Yeah. Learned everything from the Mike Termine Show. Little history about Mike. I just got to look at these numbers because I don't want to get them wrong. Ran on the city council from 2004 to 2008. Had a little hiccup in 2008. Came back in 2010 to 2018, three terms as mayor. Worked on numerous committees in his own volunteer time. And when you're on this job as city council, there is the Metro Commission, there's the Ambag, there's all these other commissions, but this is what he does in his spare time, aside from having a full job. Served on the board for the Capitola Public Safety Foundation, the board for the American Red Cross, Capitol Art and Culture Commission, and there wasn't an art and wine festival that Mike Termine wasn't making sure that it, that all things came together, Capitola Begonia Festival. And when he's not busy doing that, sometimes he was in character. There's only one person I know that can be Santa Claus, the Easter Bunny, and lead the Halloween parade, Halloween Parade every year. That's our man, Mike. Nicknames: the mayor, snake charmer, magician, and most recently, the motion maker, because this is what he does. Favorite scenes? Not a problem. And whose idea was that? On a serious note, this is a sad day for me because I'm losing a good friend that I'm working with here, but someone that actually mentored me. I came to town in 2009 to retire and surf and play golf. I wandered onto the parking commission, and he saw me at a meeting and said, "You need to be on the general plan committee." And the rest was history, okay? I'm under the, under his hex and got into this job. I've learned from this man, and that he's a friend to almost everyone in this room, to Public Works, to the police, to all employees. I can say without a doubt that no one has done more for this city or loves this city more than this man standing in front of me. I, the two new buildings, the only two new buildings I can think of in this town that are there and are going to be built is, he was participatory in building, in helping the bandstand being built, and now we're getting ready to do a library. So without him, I'm afraid there may be no more new buildings. The one thing is, you know, Mike is never one to be on top or to brag about what he did, but you know, the one thing I'm taking away, and this is my parting thought with him, that I learned from him was, he taught me that no one person is larger than the position, but a position, but a person can make the position large. And that's Mike Termine, and thank you for everything you've done for the city of Capitola.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so Mike, Mike has always had a sense of humor when it comes to running a campaign, and we had to search far and wide, and we had to go to the internet in order to find one of his relics, which was a highly, well, he had to actually go to the city manager's budget and bid on this item, and it wasn't cheap. And it is a button that says here, "Don't be a weenie, vote for Termine." Okay? And after we secured the button, we decided, we decided that since Mike was a cook, actually not a cook, he's a chef, hang on to this.
I got this.
We thought that the most appropriate thing for him was, was his own apron to recognize his political career. And with that, perfect.
There's a part, there's a part two.
There's more.
Sweet.
What does that say? Mayor retired. Mayor retired. I love it.
Pass the bag down.
Yes.
Now is the time for, you've said your piece, we'll let you...
I'm done right now.
And Kristin, anything?
Yes. Mike, I want to thank you because I've learned so much from you, not only in the things that you have shared with me, but the things that I have seen you do and, and just from watching you do this job and be in the community, I've learned so very much. And I am so lucky and honored to have had these two years. You have given me an example of what to strive for as I continue in my career in government and politics and just in being in my community. There's not a board or commission or event or pretty much anywhere that I've gone in this city where someone doesn't say, "Oh, yeah, you're on, you're on the city council with Mike," right? And it's, and it's, and it's, you're just so loved in this, in this community and very rightfully so. And again, just thank you. Thank you so much. And much like I said with Stephanie, you're not going that far because I'll be calling you still as well. So thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Jacques?
Yeah. So I remember when I became vice mayor, Mike took me aside. He says, "We're meeting every morning before the mayor, before the city council." So every month, or every two times a month, at James, what, Gail's, right? We're there talking about the agenda. So I can't talk with anyone else about it because of the brown act, so I'm cornered.
That was one of the reasons I made him talk to me.
Yeah, I think that's why he did it. It was very good, very good. Yeah, I've learned a lot about how to fill the role, how you are as a mayor, but more than that, somehow you have the spirit of Capitola, and you've, you've filled it up. I think Ed said it right. You've expanded that role. And the other day, I was thinking, when you weren't going to be here in mayor anymore, I said, "Who's going to do, you know, the thing at the bandstand every, you know, I mean, what's going to happen with the..." I was going through all these events that you do all the time, and everyone assumes you're just going to be there, and you are. And I always say, "God, what's Capitola going to do? I don't have an answer."
I'm sure it'll be fine.
Yeah, I'm sure it'll be fine too, but still, you're going to be well missed.
Thank you.
And I'll miss you too.
Staff, any last jabs? You're good?
Last jabs.
This is such an emotional moment that I can barely really make any comments, but I'm just kidding, as you all know. I'm never too emotional to talk, and certainly not without a microphone. I'd like to thank the staff, Steve, Public Works. Being in construction most of my life, I recognize people out there doing work, and they are always out there doing work, and I appreciate their leader, Steve Jesperg, first class. Chief McManus, who's back there, head of arguably the best, most conscientious, most professional police force I've ever encountered. Thank you very much. First class to you and all of your people. To Larry, where's, there he is. Little-known fact, Larry and I see each other about three times a day. We seem to always be bumping into this at the same meetings, and it's been great. You've been a real right hand, and you're terrific. Katie, is she back there? Hi, Katie. There he is, all the way in the back. Community Development Director, just has taken that job to new levels. Thank you. And thank you for not taking that job that was offered to you, and we were able to snake you back. Linda, keeps me out of jail. Little-known fact, if it weren't for a good city clerk, we would never file on time, we'd never file the right papers, and we'd be getting nasty letters from the FPPC all the time. So thank you. And does it in a very gentle way, and then does it again when I'm late, and then does it again. Jim Malberg back there, Finance Director, thanks for keeping the Finance Advisory Committee in line. It's not an easy herd of cats to herd. So well done. And Jamie, I don't know what to say. You know, you've become a friend, but I resent only one thing you've ever said to me, and the last time we spoke, you said, "You know, you're starting to sound like a city manager." And I, that had me, I had to look inward on that one, and you're right. And you have shown me how to do it. You are terrific. You're forward-thinking, you're energetic, energetic to a fault, I might add, going skiing and hurting yourself on a regular basis, but keep up the good work. I'd like to thank former council members, people like Gail, Dennis, Bruce Arthur, Tony Gualtieri, Kirby Nickel, Sam Story. We are shaped by council members we work with and council members that came before us. They set the tone. It is, they, the council members that have come before us are the reason that we sit in these chambers twice a month, and it is orderly, it is respectful, there is intelligent dialogue and discourse. They have set that tone, and I am so proud of that, almost more than anything in Capitola. We have superlative council meetings, even when the worst possible thing is happening. We go through it, we're, and we respect everyone's opinion. It's a great feeling. To my wonderful Linda Smith back there, eight years on the Planning Commission for me, just terrific. Even though I tried to get you to run for council, Larry always won, her husband, and he said, "It's either the council or me." So I'm afraid I lost on that one. Current council members, Stephanie is not here, much gratitude and guidance and steadfast interviews, and she's done a lot for the community. Kristin, you know, when I first met you, I immediately knew that you were going to be a powerful voice in the council, and you've proven that to be so. First couple of meetings, hanging back. Then you were right out there with the rest of us. Perfect. Jacques, there's never been anyone more hardworking and endless amount of time devoted to the city. There's never been a meeting you didn't love. You are right there all the time. You have taken us down many rabbit holes, and you've always brought us back. So thank you for that. Ed, fellow conspirator, partner in crime, a peer, often an adversary, and you're my friend. So that doesn't have to stop tonight. Peter, as I've said, I've really grown to like you as a person. I only like you a little bit less now that you've resigned, but that's okay. I can forgive you. You're a great guy. I think that there's places for someone like you up here on Planning Commission, on, you have such an intelligent voice, such an easy pace, so don't go far. Stay around. Committees I've served on, my goodness, I dashed some off just quickly, and I ran out of space. Public Safety with Lynn Banks, the current president. Art and Cultural, thank you Kelly Barretto for being the staff, and Larry. Commission on the Environment, Village Master Plan Committee, Library Ad Hoc Committee, Library Design Committee. Small aside, Library Design Committee will go on through construction if the new council sees fit. I'd love to stay on that one committee. Thank you. Monterey Bay Community Power, an often overlooked community board. They provide the lights, the electricity that we're sitting under. They have enabled us, years and years ahead of the deadline, they have made our county carbon-free, 100 percent. Just an amazing event. And in the next four years, all the electricity will be renewable. It will all be solar, it'll all be wind-powered, and it will be zero fossil fuel or hydro... It will all be solar, it'll all be wind-powered, and it will be zero fossil fuel or hydro in our three counties. That's an incredible achievement. The Monterey Bay Air Quality Control Board, Air Resources Board, that was pretty dry meetings, but they were fun. The County Criminal Justice Committee, which, uh, one of those odd committees that I sat on where that was the only one in the room without a gun. It was very interesting. Uh, I called it the Legion of, uh, of, you know, superlative heroes or something, it was just, it was judges and cops and judges and cops. City Select Committee, RTC, Blue Ribbon Committee on Homelessness, County Library JPA, County Library Finance Authority, RDA Successor Oversight Board, Hiring Panels for various Police Chiefs and such. Pac Cove Residence Liaison, that stuck, sticks in my mind for a long, long time. I'll tell you a little secret about being in political office. When you lay your head on the pillow at night, you do not remember any of the great decisions you've made. You remember all the lousy ones. You remember every decision you could have done better. You remember every decision that where the motion could have been crafted better. They all come back to you. When you walk down the street and you see buildings that were approved, you're not proud of the ones you approved and look great, you look at the ones that should have never been approved, and you go, "Oh, what was I thinking?" So that's the, that's the burden of being an elected official. It's, uh, it's interesting. But the joy of small-town government is so palpable and so delicious. You walk down the street, you know everyone, and if you don't know them, everyone still says good morning and hello. This, this is as Mayberry as it gets, okay? When I'm mayor, I often call myself the mayor of Whoville. This is a great place. There are criticisms, and they're generally gentle. I generally hear, you know, "I watched the meeting last night, and you, you folks did a good job, but you know, you could have done this," and it's, it's wonderful, and it's, it's enriching. Then there's the not-so-gentle ones. Some are from out of town, but some of them are locals. And speaking of out of town, you know, there's no wall around Capitola, so be careful when you start to think that way, and I speak to all the residents now. Any problem that any city has around us is our problem too. We are in this together. We have to always remember we're part of a larger community. So Santa Cruz's problems are our problems, the county's problems are our problems, Watsonville, even Salinas, it, it doesn't matter, we are all together, and everyone deserves the right to have an opinion, and everyone has value, whether they're dressed in a fine suit, or whether they're carrying recycled cans to the recycling center. It doesn't matter. The human, um, quality, the sentient being that walks around us, it doesn't matter who they are or what they are, and sometimes we can put too much value on achievement and, and appearance. If a news article comes out, and it seems to impose impending doom upon the community, and that's a device that journalists use often, my message to you is, and this council, the sky is not falling. More poor decisions are made by knee-jerk panicked reactions. And like Ed said, it's never a problem. You can get through this. To the public, I would ask you to be kind to our council members, please, the ones that are coming up here, certainly the ones that are leaving, but, uh, you know, there is no great glory in this job, there's no windfall of cash, there is no political favor. You derive nothing from this job except long hours and a feeling of accomplishment. So be gentle with the electeds. There is not a community in our county where this is a full-time job. We all work at other jobs, we all have families, we all have a personal life, mine being a bit thin the last 18 years, but that's okay. Uh, I, it, this is, this has been my personal life, and I've loved every minute of it. To the new council, be humble. Do not think for a moment that all that falls from your mouth is gold. Trust me, there are plenty of people around who will tell you otherwise. Accept the criticism, take it to heart, but just because there are people all around you telling you that everything you say is right, it doesn't mean it's right. And you, and you have to start to understand what someone in Washington DC in the Senate and, and what they go through, because they have a staff telling them that all the time. So heads can get large, this is not the place for it, it doesn't work. Be loving. Everyone here are our neighbors. It's their environment that we're fooling around with at every meeting. So when they get upset, it's not personal. It may seem so, but it's not, but they hold it very dearly, even to the point where when we get rid of a crosswalk, there's actually someone who, that was their favorite crosswalk. Who knew? These are the kind of things you deal with. Why are they painting City Hall that color? I've never really liked that color. You listen. Be decisive. Nothing is ever done, if you have endless public input and meetings on it, have the appropriate amount, but then stand by your decision. And most importantly, never make a decision because it will make you popular. Rather, make a decision because it's the right one for the city. You didn't get this job to be popular. I think we all know that, being up here, and I think the folks that are going to be stepping up here soon know that really well. I have a love affair with this city, and it is not over. I believe that once you love someone or something, you love it forever. You may not be near it, you may not be in it, uh, but you love something forever, because true love is deep and it's forever. And I hope that, I leave all the best to this in future councils. You are Capitola. You represent it, but we all are Capitola. And I, you know, I say something at the end of every meeting, and I think I should clarify it, and what I mean by being nice to each other, there's never a good reason to hold back kindness, ever. There's no reason to hate or launch a personal attack, there's no reason to hold a grudge. We're all going to the same place, we've all got the same end, no one's going to win this race, so you may as well be kind to each other. So for the last time, I will say, "Good night, Capitola." Be nice to each other.
See you out on the streets, Mike. So we're going to move on to Item 7C, Oath of Office Ceremony, and Linda, do you have a report?
We have.
And you're going to administer the oath of offices.
In, in most cases, yes. We have three members to welcome and welcome back. We'll be doing it in order of vote-getting, and we have a special guest who will be swearing in, our first member, Yvette Brooks, and, um, the, I guess you are now mayor, mayor of Santa Cruz and dear friend, um, is going to do the honors of swearing her in.
Hold the mic with the left and raise the right.
Do we need him? Yvette, Yvette, Yvette. On, on the gold spot, camera's over there to the right.
I, State Leader, I, Yvette Brooks, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, or affirm, or affirm, that I will support and defend, and defend, the Constitution, the Constitution of the United States, of the United States, and the Constitution, and the Constitution of the State of California, of the State of California, against all enemies, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true, that I will bear true, faith and allegiance, faith and allegiance, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, of the United States, of the United States, and the Constitution, and the Constitution of the State of California, of the State of California, that I, that I, that I, take this obligation, that I take this obligation freely, freely, without any mental, without any mental reservation or purpose, reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I, that I will well, and faithfully, discharge, discharge, the duties, the duties, upon which, upon which, I am about to enter.
And now we'll count the number of elects, Sam Story, please join me. And you will all be able to recite this by memory, by memory.
I. Same story.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. And another welcome back. Hold the mic with the left and raise the right.
I.
I, Jacques Bertrand.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. And another welcome back. Hold the mic with the left and raise the right.
I.
I, Jacques Bertrand.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Welcome back. No, he's got Yvette.
Yvette.
She's just going to go get her speech.
Oh. Okay, so now we move on to city council reorganization, and, um, the selection of the mayor and vice mayor. So I call upon the group here to nominate a member here for mayor.
I move nomination of Vice Mayor Bertrand as mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I call for nominations for vice mayor.
I'll nominate Councilwoman Kristen Peterson as vice mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a nomination, a second for?
Two seconds.
Two seconds, okay. Councilmember Peterson for vice mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we now have a mayor and vice mayor. Move on to Item 7C. We do have some, um, council appointments, and I think we have a presentation from our city manager.
He's running tech.
Oh, he's running tech, so, um, okay, you're going to do it, sorry.
So, um, although the bulk of our, um, appointments will be handled in January, there are a few organizations on which we have representatives that we wish to give, um, people enough time to prepare and attend those meetings. So there are three items this evening, um, the first of which is the Planning Commission. These are five individual appointments by each of the council members. We received two sitting, um, current members who have expressed interest in being re, um, reappointed, and interest from five community members, and you've had the chance to review those and speak with people. So I will, um, begin with my returning, um, members. Councilmember Batorv, who would you like to appoint?
Reappoint TJ Welch.
Good. And, um...
Repoint Ed.
Mayor Bertrand.
Yes.
Repoint Ed Newman.
Yep.
And Councilmember Peterson, who is your appointment?
My appointment is Peter Wilk.
Peter Wilk, very good. And Councilmember Brooks.
I appoint Courtney Christensen.
Courtney Christensen. And Councilmember Story.
I appoint McRuth.
Very good. The next item, um, is the sanitation board. This requires a council representative meets twice a month, end of the day on Thursdays. Uh, there's only one meeting in January, but there are often two. This position was long-held and very well-represented by Councilmember Harlan, um, and, uh, our now mayor has been the alternate in this position. So we need both a representative and an alternate this time. Do you have any, either nominations or offers? We can do this by concurrence.
Okay, yeah, I am the alternate, I'd like to continue as a representative.
As the alternate or the person?
As the representative.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, so, um, our alternate has offered to move into the representative's position. Is there anyone who is interested in taking on the alternate position?
If there's no one else that is interested, um, I would be willing to serve as the alternate.
Very good. And council concurrence on these appointments?
Confirmed.
Very good. And the final item we have tonight is, um, the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, or AMBEC. Uh, we do have, um, monthly meetings, they move around within that region. Um, our current representative and alternate are still with us. We have, um, Councilmember Peterson has been serving in that position as representative, and Councilmember Batorv has been the alternate. Um, so at this time, um, they may express interest in continuing or offer other members of the council the opportunity to take those positions.
I'm happy to continue in that role unless there's someone who's, um, really interested in taking it over. Otherwise, I'm happy to continue.
Okay.
And I have the same feeling, I'm happy to be the alternate unless someone has that desire.
And is the council happy with that?
Yeah, I'm happy, yes, yes.
Very good. And we will have a much longer process in January. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment while we, before we move on, is that I'd like to put something on the agenda for next meeting to prepare us. I'd like to have staff prepare, uh, some direction that we can discuss about dissolving the Parking and Traffic Commission, and bring that back with some, some input before we decide and pick those personnel.
Okay. We'll put that on the agenda. Thank you. So with that, we move on to 7C, and this is to consider the 2019 meeting schedule, and also, um, for this successor agency, and also to consider, uh, when we start our meeting here in the city council. So is there a staff report on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an annual item that we do each year to set the meeting calendar for the city council. Um, last year we discussed potentially moving the meeting start time from seven o'clock to six o'clock. And also for this accessory agency, and also to consider when we start our meeting here in the city council. So is there a staff report on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an annual item that we do each year to set the meeting calendar for the city council. Last year, we discussed potentially moving the meeting start time from seven o'clock to six o'clock. The primary reason why we were discussing it was to try to get to the general business of the city council early in the evening to try to facilitate better community participation. However, at that time, we also acknowledged the fact that council members who work regular office schedules may have a difficult time attending closed session, which would often begin at five o'clock. So last year, the council directed us to continue with the seven o'clock meeting time, but then maybe revisit the topic a year later. So here we are a year later, and we're looking to set the agenda, the calendar for this next calendar year. Looking for your feedback, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Yes, any questions, Jamie?
I have questions, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I had questions concerning the calendar, Jamie. I noticed that between the submittal date and the meeting date, it's generally about ten days. But for the meeting of March the fourteenth, there's a submittal date of February the twenty-fifth, which is an extended period. And for the meeting of March twenty-eighth, the submittal date is March eleventh, which was an extended period, kind of out of the norm. I've noticed all that, the difference was about ten days, well, nine to ten days, but for those two. And I was just wondering if there was a reason for that, or if that's just a misstated date.
I think it's a misstated date. We, in general, what we're doing here is we're setting the calendar for the council meetings, and the submittal date is more an internal date, I think, for us to prepare our agenda packets.
Yes, we can confirm it. Generally, it is the Monday before the packet goes out. Occasionally, we have what we call a fifth week. And so there is some shift, and it may be, but we will confirm that it is, in fact, the Monday before the packet goes out, unless there's a holiday, so some of those also shift for holidays.
Right, yeah.
But yes, if there is extra time, it may be that it became a fifth week.
Right, well, I'm just encouraging to look at those two dates and
We will confirm those before publishing.
And if I may, I did have also a question about the meeting of Tuesday, November the twenty-sixth. The submittal date is the eighteenth. But seems like that would be a very short turnaround for staff to be able to release the agendas by, you know, by that Tuesday. So just making sure
We'll take, we'll take a look at it.
I believe it's still the Monday before, either that or we've got a
Yes, it's, it is that Monday, but assuming that
That's our standard, because we have a, a, a meeting the day prior, or the week prior, so
Okay, so but
It is a quicker turnaround, you are correct.
But the agenda will be, will be posted still that same Friday?
Yes.
Or would it come out sooner, because it's
Yeah, to be clear, so what we're doing is we're setting the calendar for the council meetings, and the, the submittal date is usually the last date for information to get in for a packet. It's usually more of an internal date that we work from. Our published date for the agenda information, the agenda packet, is the Friday prior to the meeting. And you're correct, that one meeting before the Thanksgiving break, we don't move forward this agenda packet production, so it is produced on Friday.
It's still Friday, okay, thank you.
Yes, and we are still within the seventy-two hours as required by the Brown Act. We usually publish in excess of the seventy-two hour requirement.
I have a question, if we move the general, any other questions? Okay, my other question, if we move the city meeting earlier, what's that gonna mean for our closed sessions? And, I mean, it's still an hour before, forty-five minutes before, that could be a problem for people to work.
Yeah, as I mentioned in the staff report, I think for folks that work, I think it could be a challenge, because in general, we need between thirty and sixty minutes for a closed session. So if we move to six, that means a five o'clock start at some meetings. If we move to six-thirty, that would mean a five-thirty start for some meetings. So I would really encourage the council to have a conversation about what people's work schedule looks like to see if it's possible, and if the value of moving earlier, if it's worth it or not.
If I may, I, I would prefer it to stay till, or to begin at seven, to continue as
You want the public weigh in on this before we discuss the item, or?
Yeah, I just want her opinion on the time, you're absolutely right. So any open conversation from the public right now? Anyone like to weigh in on this? Seeing none, back to the council here for discussion.
Yeah, I, I think that we should leave it at the time that it's at. I think it's gonna create a hardship for people that are working, especially with the fact that our closed sessions have been at least an hour, if sometimes not earlier than that. I think what we need to do is maybe sit down as a group and discuss some ways that we can streamline the meeting agenda. Maybe we can limit the amount of time we allow for things like presentations and, you know, general comments. And so possibly, we should have some kind of a target, we get to the general business by seven-thirty. And I think at that point, we can, you know, we can be very productive with our meeting time. So I'm not in favor of changing the time at this point.
So I, I kinda like that, any other comments?
Well, I just, I agree with that, I think that we should try to keep things consistent until maybe we as a team get our rhythm. And then if we want, we can always look at altering the dates at that time if we feel that it's not working out for everyone.
Okay.
The other item that we are requesting is council direction for preference for August. If we do wish to have just a single meeting, we have the, the choice between the earlier or the later date.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear in my presentation. Staff would recommend taking the first meeting in Aug, in July off. It's often difficult to get a quorum around the Fourth of July, and then the first meeting in August off. So we would be dark for two meetings during the summer. But my recommendation is not to do it for two consecutive meetings, is that is a relatively extended period without the city council getting together, so that's, that would be my suggestion.
So instead of moving the city council meeting, do people generally accept the calendar dates?
We have consent.
Is there a motion?
Need a motion on that?
Do you need a motion to approve the
Take a motion to adopt the recommendation we discussed, and adjust the vacation periods for the two dark meetings, first in July and first in August.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that brings us to item seven C, seven eight, or number eight, excuse me, I gotta get my rhythm here too. Adjournment, thank you very much for coming to City Capitolus. Done.
We would welcome, I think perhaps, since we've had slightly odd, the opportunity for our new members to make some statements.
Okay. Well
No, you go first.
I won't be long, I promise. Well, good evening, everyone. I want to begin by thanking our current city council. It was because of your encouragement and endorsements that I felt right for this position. I look forward to working with all of you. Next, I would like to thank my campaign team, Lisa Christie, who's out there, Susan McPeak, Angela West, who couldn't make it tonight, and Celeste Guzietas. I could not have done this without any of you, so thank you very much. I'd also like to thank my husband Larry. Many people ask me along the campaign trail, how could I work full-time, run a campaign, be a mom and a wife? And I would answer, I'm an amazing partner. I honestly could not do this without you, thank you. I also need to acknowledge that little cutie next to him, our beautiful and very smart daughter Sedona. She is what fuels me to advocate for children in our community. Investing early in youth means you're directly investing in your community. So thank you, Sedona, for being my light. I'd also like to thank my parents, Oscar and Carol Rivera, who are also up front tonight. They, the both of you have paved the way for me to be able to advocate for myself and for others around me. You taught me that giving back to your community is essential and should be part of everyone's life. I'm so proud to be your daughter. Thank you for always supporting me and being there for me. And finally, I promise, see if it's not too long. I would like to thank all of you, the voters. I was excited to see that so many people came out this election to vote. All of you, the community, are, is what makes, or, excuse me, is, are the glue to what makes our community great. And I look forward to engaging you more in local decisions, and hope that in, in my next four years, we continue the legacy that council members Stephanie Harlan and Mayor Michael Termini have created. Because I am committed to ensuring that Capitol is sustainable, safe, and welcoming, and family-friendly for everybody. I look forward to working on the Forty-first Avenue, the development of Forty-first Avenue and the mall, as well as developing and utilizing the dedicated children's fund that we recently passed. As well as creating policy that supports all community members, including seniors and at-risk youth. It is an absolute privilege to work on behalf, on your behalf, and I look forward to getting to work, thank you.
You know, it's an honor to be here. I'm really grateful to the voters of Capitola for allowing me to come back and sit in this seat. It's still new and exciting for me, but it's starting to feel comfortable again. However, you know, one, and as Yvette knows, and Jacques knows, one doesn't get to this position without the help and support of many people. And I want to take a few minutes to, to thank them, beginning with my family. Helen, and Ruby, and Jessie. Helen, for being my treasurer and working with me to figure out the FPPC rules. We spent late nights completing forms. I want to thank Ruby for being my Instagram campaign manager, and walking the neighborhoods with me. I want to thank my other daughter Jessie for being my Facebook campaign manager. I was completely new to Facebook, I had no idea how to navigate it, what to do. But she got me through that, and, and I do want, you know, I had a birthday just before the election, and I made all my family for my birthday, you know, walk the Jewel Box neighborhood. So, but, you know, they were great sports, and I really so much appreciated, best birthday gift ever, thank you guys. I want to thank my campaign manager Lynn Banks for helping me through this campaign. And her husband Mike for allowing her to do that, and for the work that he put in on behalf of my campaign. I want to thank Amy Forrest for setting up my website, and for Carl for allowing her to do that, and helping to walk their neighborhoods. I want to make a special thanks to Bruce and Dory Arthur for their encouragement and inspiration to me. I want to thank all those neighbors who held house meetings for all the candidates. It was really a wonderful opportunity to meet the neighbors in the various parts of Capitola. So I want to thank Lisa and Dan, and Linda and Larry, and Lynn and Mike for opening up your homes and being such gracious hosts. I want to thank all those who made donations to my campaign. And finally, I want to thank all the residents of Capitola who voted for me, and I'll put out two thousand eight hundred and nine thank yous, you know, at this time. I want to thank the staff for the orientation that they put on to help inform us. I want to thank Linda Friedy for all the guidance and help and patience in us submitting all the necessary paperwork to qualify and not get into trouble. And in, I also want to just say some brief words about Stephanie and Mike. And I know that, we all know what wonderful and dedicated individuals they have been to Capitola. And, and I'll just have to say, I, I mean, of all the years that I've lived in Capitola, I think that they've always been my inspiration of how we need to be engaged and involved and participate in our local government and in our lo, in our community. And that you can do it with, with compassion and with humor. So, you know, I think, for me, a nickname for Mike would be Mr. Capitola, I always called him that. And for me, Stephanie is Ms. Capitola. So they will be missed here, but certainly not in our community. And finally, I just want to say I look forward to working with each and every one of you, the council members, and to work together all for the benefit of Capitola. So thank you.
I had not prepared any comments. But I can make a few. So I, I think, I always wonder how people start out on their trajectory in life. It's one of the things I always think about. And sometimes when I become friends, they share that with me. And I'll share a little bit about myself, which I haven't done. But one of my first campaign issues was on recycling, when no one knew how to recycle. Another one of my first campaign issues, I was in San Francisco, was to try to get free concerts in the park. And I still remember assembling stages in Golden Gate Park, so we could have free concerts. And collecting money so that some people would help us continue. I was very involved in the food movement, which has led to things like Whole Foods and things like that. We're the precursors of natural foods and trying to be concerned about what we eat. I was also very much involved in police relations with the community. I was president of Friends Know We Value for three years, and one of the things I stressed was that we need to have good relations with our police department, because those are the people that should know our community, and should know who needs protection, and have that communication, so we could always tell them what's going on. I worked on childhood leukemia, because I knew kids that were dying of childhood leukemia, I worked on that. I've worked on a lot of issues. I organized, helped organize the First Haight-Ashbury Community Food Fair, uh, food, excuse me, Street Fair. I knew all the people in those neighborhoods. I got elected to, um, I won't go into that direction. But what I've never had really, because I've always been an advocate, I have four pages of stuff that I've worked on. But what got started, what got me started here in Capitola was Sam. You know, I was trying to get on the Finance Advisory Committee, and everyone said, you know, you have to be part of the accepted whatever, you have to be part of the guys, part of the, you know, what's around town, or, I don't know how to put it. And I was beating my head against the bushes, a wall, you know, how am I gonna get involved in Capitola? How, how am I gonna do something where I think I could, you know, make a difference? So I went to Sam when I heard there was an opening on the Finance Advisory Committee. He said, yeah, I think I showed you my four pages. And he said, yeah, I'd like to appoint you. And then, a lot of committees after that. Ran for city treasurer, no one ran against me, I think they all knew I was gonna win. And I tried for three times to get elected city council, and the fourth time, I made it. I also tried to be SoCal School Treasurer, I mean, trustee, did not make that. So I ran for four elections before I even got to this position. And then this is my second election. And it's an honor, it really is. And I'll tell you why it's an honor. I've knocked on probably cycles to six or eight times on most of the houses of this town. In this last election, I think I lost a good ten or more pounds. I, I was sweating, people would look at me, you know, I was over at Castle, Mo Home Park, and this lady, she couldn't speak English, but said, agua? She gave me a bottle of water. Oh, Pam will remember the time that I drank too much water, she answered the door, and I said, could I use your bathroom? So you do not drink water when you're campaigning. So I've lots, lots of experiences like that, where people, once they answer the door, and they find out that you're running for city council, will tell you everything that they would like to see in Capitola. They'll ask you all sorts of questions. I've been talking to people, even though I gave myself three hours that night to campaign, for an hour and a half on measure L, jeez, how many times I spent talking about that? But all the other campaigns I've done, it's the same thing. It's a real honor to be able to come to a door and know that once the person sees that you're running for Capitol, they recognize that. There's something about Capitol, you can't do that in major cities. They're gonna slam the door in your face if they even answer it. So cherish the fact that everyone here, in this council chambers right now, and all those who are listening, are living in a community where people are involved, and they cherish the fact that people do put themselves out to get involved. Involvement is on all sorts of levels. People that share what they want, what they think about this community, what they aspire for this community, that's involvement. Neighbors that talk to their neighbors about how things could be better, that's involvement. Neighbors that are involved in their church, that's involvement. Laborers who are involved in their unions, that's involvement. Leaders who are involved in all sorts of other organizations. This community is an inter-network of people being involved with each other. You have a kid that's in the daycare, the person running that daycare knows a million neighbors, you talk to that person, that person will talk to other people. What I'm trying to say, be involved in ways where you could express your thoughts, express your feelings about the community you live in, and that moves around the city. That influences how other people feel about the city. They know that people are talking about the city 'cause they care about it. I was elected, 'cause I talked to many people in Capitola, realize I care about this community, and I do, thank you very much. May I adjourn now?
Yes.
Okay, meaning adjourn.